Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Move to approve today's agenda.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Brian Devick from Siemens. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Good morning. It's Devick.
Devick, okay. All right. You have an update for us?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, Dave asked me to invite Brian to the meeting and give the supervisors kind of the history of where we're at, where we're going, what the timelines are, what the expectations are. And so I asked Brian here this morning, and he was happy to do that. So he'll kind of outline the project and the timelines and what we can expect and what the main plan is, what the goal at the end of the day is.
So, good morning. My name's Brian Devick. I am with Siemens Industry. Our office that I work out of is out of Antioch, Iowa, but we cover the entire state. The project that we are executing currently for the jail is to replace the jail computerized control systems. Those systems run and operate all of the door locks, all of the lighting, all of the two-way intercoms, all of the systems that actually function within your jail. The scope of this is to... There's a couple of issues that we have to deal with in relation to your facility. One thing we can't do is we can't shut the jail down. So we have to be able to build and install the new system while the old system is still running and be able to migrate from one system to the other. In the process that we did our investigating and working with the jail, we determined early on that where your current system is sitting in the basement, you can't put a new system next to it. You physically don't have the room to do that. So we worked with the jail staff on finding another location to put the system, which is on the first floor. And so we are going to use a manufacturer called Creative Technologies. They make a product called Secured State. That is one of the major manufacturers for the state of Iowa for jail control systems. They're going to manufacture the actual equipment. We're going to provide it and install it. It's going to be installed on the first floor. We are going to have an electrical contractor out of Des Moines that is going to make all the wiring connections between your old existing and your new. And then there'll be a process of cutting over from the old system to the new system one piece at a time. In order to make this all work correctly and not have issues for the jail and not have any downtime or interruptions to serve us, the very first thing, which my people have already started on, is a complete catalog inventory of every single piece of equipment that exists in the jail, how it's currently wired, identifying those wires, labeling them, marking them, so that before we ever start a cutover, we know exactly where everything is and how it's laid out. The next step is to order the equipment that will work for that. That'll be taking place sometime within the next 30 days. It takes about 60 days for that equipment to be manufactured and built. Every system is built custom to the application that it's being installed for, so this is being built specifically for your jail. It will be then installed by my technicians, and then we will begin the cutover process. The cutover process will take a couple of weeks. When we do the cutover process, we have three staff that are on duty when we do that, at the old location, the new location, and at the control center. And we cut one piece at a time. We test that piece. We make certain that piece works since functioning. Then we will go to the next piece. That way you don't ever end up with a problem as you move from one piece to the next. Once that is completed, we will then go and demo the old equipment, make all the correct splice connections. We will provide all the paperwork, documentation, training, everything back to the jail staff so that they have everything that's there. So that's kind of the scope of the project of what's going on. It's an extensive project. Siemens has a, what I would say is a ton of experience doing this. We've done several applications. Iowa Medical Classification Center in Oakdale, just completed one at Mount Pleasant Correction Facility for the state of Iowa. All of these have to be done where the jail cannot be interrupted in service, and it has to migrate one step to the other. You have some very good people that are... I don't brag a lot on myself, but I'll brag on my people. You have very good people that are doing this. Chek Cauth, who is your lead technician on site from our company, has over 20 years experience, and he has done this successfully at several state institutions and a few county institutions within the state already. And he'll be working with Jason Trumbo, who's our project manager, who is also has several years' experience doing these projects with the state. So want the county to feel comfortable. Siemens is dedicated to long-term relationships. We're not going anywhere. I have five technicians that are certified on this system. They're all within an hour and a half of your facility. So we'll be here. We'll make certain it's done. We'll make certain it's right, and we'll make certain you don't have any problems down the road.
Good.
Nope, sounds good.
So outside of that, I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
What do you think the... What is the total timeline that you're talking?
In order to be safe, I'm going to say probably in the neighborhood of four to five months total from start to completion. We have started. The building of the equipment is a good 60 days. But there's wiring and cutover and stuff that has to take place, and you've got a couple of weeks' worth of just cutover. You've got a couple of weeks' worth of cleanup in the wiring stuff when you're done. The last thing anybody wants left is a mess of wires.
Right, yeah.
So we're not doing that. When it's all done, every piece of wire will be labeled, identified, it'll be terminated on a terminal lock, and you can go back 15, 20 years from now, and you'll be able to trace it right back to where it is.
Okay, sounds good.
Donna, had a question.
Donna?
The old system when you're finished, who removes them?
We will remove the equipment out of the racks and deliver that back to the jail.
Oh, so it will be kind of like sitting in a corner, do whatever you will?
It's up to the jail to do whatever they want to with it.
Right.
The system is basically what we call a PLC system. It's program logic control relays that engage everything. So you have a computer that is several years old now, and I don't know if there's any real value in that for reuse and anything, to be honest with you, and a bunch of relays in a rack. And that's what your existing equipment is. So when we're done, what the jail is going to get back with the old stuff is two old computers and some boxes of relays. Because we're going to clean that all out, and we'll put terminal scripts in place for terminating the wires.
I asked because I worked in an office building once where new systems put in, old systems not removed, and there were phantom phones going off everywhere.
We would never leave any of the existing in place because when we cut over from old to new, we want it as clean as it can possibly be. You want no ghosting, no image. That's part of why, before we even order equipment, we're tracing every wire to make certain that we know exactly what it's tied to and that there are no ghost connections or anything out there.
That can be a pain.
You bet.
All right, well, thank you so much. I mean, I'm just giving a little kudos here, too. I mean, you couldn't be working with anybody better over at our jail, too. Nick and Dave have done a great job in researching, and I'm sure they'll be easy to work with for you, too.
I'll pick on Dave. Nick's done a good job.
You can't pick on him when he's not here.
Well, I would, too.
I will say the entire process has been very good, working with your jail and your staff, and we appreciate it. We're looking forward to a successful completion of the project, and we're looking forward to a long relationship with you guys.
Yep, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Anything else? Good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, utility permits and secondary roads department.
Do you have these facility permit motions in any or not?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Iowa DOT permit application by CenturyLink for the purpose of placing fiber optic cable along Highway 65 from MM Avenue to County Highway S-45 located in Sections 4 and 5 of Hardin Township.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion to approve the Iowa DOT permit application by CenturyLink for the purpose of placing fiber optic cable along Highway 65 North Street to Mallard Avenue located in Sections 1, 12, and 13 of Hardin Township.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion to approve the Iowa DOT permit application by CenturyLink for the purpose of placing fiber optic cable along Highway 65 from South Park Estates to County Road D-25 located in Section 30, 31, Hardin Township, and Section 2 of Ellis Township.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carried.
All right, so the S-56 paving project, today and yesterday, they are doing what they're calling its milling. They're pretty much removing like the top edge. It makes a smoother surface, and then they'll pave back over that. Joe says the pilot car is very slow because a lot of times their work goes out into the other lane that people should be driving on, so it slows all down. So he said some people might be angry, but they'll get a brand-new road, so it's all okay. I looked into your Brett Perry vacation, or it's not a vacation. Okay, we found the paperwork and we bought it, so we own that.
Okay.
So, and we bought a bigger chunk, so we don't have a description of just that, so we're going to need an official survey. So then I was going to tell him that that'd be at his expense, because it's no benefit to us to do it.
Right, I agree.
Good.
That's where I'm moving from there.
All right. Nothing else?
Nope.
All right. Okay, the review and consider innovative aid services agreement.
So we went over this last week, you know, kind of describing the project. We found the agreement from 2002, so we kind of adjusted it for this situation, and essentially it was about the same agreement.
Yeah, looked like it.
So Rick, sir, do you got any questions for him, too?
Has anybody on that road been contacted at all about this?
Not from our perspective.
Okay.
Okay.
Has anybody called, asked questions?
And when does this go into effect?
Soon as we can get the...
I mean, it's going to be happening soon?
Soon as we can get the stuff built and installed.
Okay.
I'm working with Johnny Lancaster from up to Albany, so I'm working with to help us do that.
Okay.
So I'd like to do it sooner rather than later.
Right, okay. All right, good to know. Okay.
I'll go ahead and approve the agreement for Hardin County Innovative Aid Services as presented.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Nope, thank you.
DOT agreement for county bridge federal aid swap funding.
So this is for our project. It's just west of United Supplyers on 260th, the gravel part there where that bridge is currently closed. So this is an agreement to receive funding from the state. It's all state money. It's not federal money, but they're still making us go through this, just kind of through the paper trail. So, yeah, it's essentially us saying, yes, we will accept your money.
Okay.
I will move to approve the Iowa Department of Transportation agreement for county bridge federal and aid swap funding as presented.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Change of status, secondary roads department.
Move to approve the secondary roads, Mitchell Moche Secondary Roads for hired full-time as a mechanic at 2135, starting 7/11 of 2018.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Public comments, any... Jim?
Jim Brown, representing the Veterans Memorial Committee and Project. We would like the supervisors to consider allowing us to serve the committee, and Sam asked us to serve food on the, in the front of the courthouse. I don't know if that's possible or not, but we would like it to be as visible as possible. That would be on Friday noon, the 27th, as part of the Fine Line Festival. And also, just our total project cost really probably be about $140,000, but at least $20,000 of that will be donated in kind. We're right about $80,000, so we need another $40,000 to $50,000 conservatively. And I know in the past, we've seen the thermometers that show how much money has been raised and how much is left. We would also appreciate if you would consider allowing us to do that for probably no more than about, well, it would probably be through the end of September. Our goal, well, it's going to happen one way or another. We will dedicate the memorial on Veterans Day 2018.
Good.
So it's going relatively smoothly, and we consider everything that needs to be done.
Well, good. As far as the use of the courthouse square, we have a form requesting use, and it describes, you know, the time period and what the use is for. So I would just recommend getting one of those forms from the auditor's office, or I think it's accessible online.
It is.
Okay. What?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that it's possible before I...
For use on July 27th?
Yes, it's a Friday. Is that the right date?
Yeah, well, we should be having a meeting.
Yes. We'll talk about it later, if you're sure, but...
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'll fill out the form.
Okay, good.
Would that be too separate?
For that, yeah, probably. And then for the thermometer, just to kind of keep them separate, yeah, I would plan to do that. You're welcome. Julie, did you have your hand up, too?
I did. I was just wondering, are agendas being changed online after a meeting's been completed? I get a notification from the county, and it seems like some of the agendas are adjusted. Is that a thing? Is that happening?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Oh, good. So when Nancy sends out the agenda, the agenda that we put online is exactly what Nancy, Mrs. Court Secretary puts on. The only thing we, if we get supplemental information before the 10:00 a.m. meeting, we will add the supplemental information. Supplemental means a document that goes with the agenda item.
Right.
We don't change any actual agenda item once it's been posted 24 hours now, because sometimes it's 23 hours by the time I get all the information, get it online, and we're struggling, I mean, we're dealing with that, but nothing gets changed once I publish it, except for supplemental information.
Except for supplemental?
Yeah, like if someone gets a utility permit to me, you know, Tuesday afternoon before a Wednesday meeting, I will throw that up there, put the document up, the utility permit, with the agenda item that's already on the website.
So the order of the agenda, the numbered agenda points do not change?
Now, unless I get supplemental, and then I get, I have that information.
I mean, like something now is 13, maybe 16 or something like that, just...
Julie, one example is my agenda's different than that one.
And so the website...
Number one says Wednesday, July 11.
Yeah.
Mine doesn't. It starts one down.
Yeah, that's what Word document, the website software automatically numbers every single thing I put on the agenda. So I would ignore the item numbers because they're not going to match, because I can't control that. I can't control it. Every single thing I put on the agenda gets a number in front of it.
Yeah, see, up there it says number one is Wednesday, July 11, and on our agenda, number one is called a order.
So do I match that?
So...
The website, that and the website don't match. I don't know which one to match.
Actually, I think the agenda items are more important.
You can actually fix that problem with Word.
Oh!
What you do is put an enter in afterward where you've got the date, and hit back to the beginning of the W, and it'll delete that word and drop the connection number.
Okay, thank you, but I don't actually make that document.
Yeah, so I just wanted to... Yep, now make it clear that nothing, that I can look back on one from two weeks ago, and the agenda...
Oh, and I can definitely tell you, once a meeting's passed, except for adding any video or audio, I don't need to touch that. I don't even look at them again. I can guarantee you that much.
Okay, because some people actually do look at them again.
Oh, yeah, I don't. I move on to the next week.
Yeah, I don't.
Thank you.
Not trying to drag an old dog through the mud again. In May, regarding the Thomas project, we were told, be patient. There's a confidentiality agreement that goes to, I believe, May 27th. Beginning of June, I asked about it. We were told, well, the confidentiality agreement is still in force, which it wasn't.
Which?
The Thomas project.
Oh, Thomas, oh, yeah, okay.
And it was regarding the rail, the railway.
Right.
I was patient through June, no word. There is, I'm told, rail work being done up there. I'm not sure as to what. What is this Thomas project?
Well, it's, as Cindy said, it's the rail project that Iowa Falls has been looking into for a number of years as far as a dual-rail system that would connect the two rail lines that go through Iowa Falls. And there was a prospective... Company, yes, looking into that. And that's the information that was confidential as far as who is actually looking into it. And there's, it's confidential under the code of Iowa for certain reasons. I'm not even aware of any progress on that. I mean, we haven't really been updated much on that either, so I'm not even know, I don't even know where that project is at this point in time.
So the whole mysterious Thomas project simply had to do with connecting two rail systems in Iowa Falls?
The confidential part of it is the company that was looking into it and being the possible developer of the project. And that's what's kept confidential for legal reasons.
Why did it have, why did the whole general thing of it then have to be kept so secretive? Just don't say the specific name of the specific company.
Well, that's why it was just called Project Thomas.
Thomas the Train. I know. I pulled that back in May by someone not connected.
I don't even know if that's how they picked it. I don't, I'm not aware. I guess I never really thought of Thomas the Train, but now that you say that, so...
I was haunted by Thomas the Train at 6 o'clock every morning when my son was little.
So, okay, are there any other public comments? All right, we'll move on with Veterans Affairs Office Hours.
Pat Gohn, June 11th, the three members of the Hardin County Veterans Affairs Commission, Merrill Chapman, Bonnie Widikar of Aqui, and Don Orgo of Eldora, sent you all a letter recommending that my office hours be increased from 20 hours a week to 28 hours a week. And they cited two possible sources of funding. First, I want to be absolutely clear that we're not requesting any increase in the county budget whatsoever. We get a $10,000 allocation from the state of Iowa. Every county gets it the first part of the calendar physical year. I have a list here of the authorized uses of those funds, and the first item on the list is increase in office hours. When I talked with you on the phone the other day, you thought that $10,000 would be used to fund my salary, and in fact, it's not. My salary comes through your budget. My budget is $15,700. I put my budget in, $15,000 in the black. So besides the $10,000 from the state allocation, there's plenty of money in the existing budget to fund this increase, which cost is $89,900. I've invited one of my veterans, Richard Law of Iowa Falls, kind of to speak on my behalf, and I'll turn it over to him.
How are y'all doing today?
Just fine, how are you?
I'm going to try and talk this slow because my accent's a little... I moved up here to Iowa in November 2015, Iowa Falls. Prior to that, I have been seen by various veterans organizations throughout the south, through Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, and even as far out west as Los Angeles. At every one of these locations, I've tried to deal with veteran services officers helping cut through the massive red tape that is the Veterans Administration. I have yet to find one better than the one.
Good to hear.
He's done his job a year, and he's doing this good job.
Good.
As a tax-dated citizen, I have no qualms even if he did ask for county budget money. If this man wants to work 100 hours a week, let him do it, please. He's that good. His efforts are Herculean. He's currently helping me with an appeal that has been in the works for quite a while now, and one that our previous VSO could not handle at all, had no clue on how to word it again. I'll leave it at that.
It's good to hear.
Richard was a survivor of the explosion on the USS Palisade, ship Iowa, in 1989, and killed 47 sailors. Richard was a member of the firefighting team that went into the turret to put the fires out. And as a result of the trauma that he faced, seeing that his best friend's head pulling the, having to pry the hands of dead sailors off of rails where they were trying to climb out and died. He suffered PTSD to one of the most severe extents, and I've really made it kind of my role in life to ensure that he gets his benefits that are due him. So we've got a notice of dissent into the federal VA. I feel very confident that we're going to get his reading raised from 70 to 100 percent, and also individual unemployment. So what I'm requesting that you're approval of is that eight-hour-a-week increases. Now, BJ's not here. BJ sent me this email this morning where he states that he's in favor of, you can see it right on the top line there, in favor of increased services. 28 hours a week, well, how I would do that, right now, I do on Wednesdays, I'm four hours in Iowa Falls. I pack up and I move down to Eldora, four hours, and we do the same thing Thursday, four hours in Iowa Falls, pack up, move to Eldora, four hours, county office building. So again, it's not going to cost you anything. It's not above and beyond the budget. I'm not asking you for any taxpayer dollars. I'm just, you know, my commissioners have come online, 100 percent in favor of it. Just ask for your approval.
Do you have any history on... Do you have any history on what the hours have been for that office over the years?
Yeah, it's been 20. It's because of the size of our county, we're a 20-hour-a-week part-time. At my national certification training arena, and I just returned from the big pushes and tried to expand the hours of these part-time offices. We have 1,750 veterans in Hardin County.
How many?
1,750. That's a lot of veterans. I can stay quite busy every day, helping them with applications to the VA. They come in, I have the budget you give me for gas, groceries, rent, utilities. So I stay pretty busy. The World War II generation, of course, are slowly dying, and what I'm seeing now is a lot of widows' pensions. So I help the widows through the maze, help them get the reimbursement from the federal government for their husband's funeral, and then get them a widow's pension. Keep seeing quite busy.
Do we know how long we've had 20 hours a week? How many years?
Indefinite. It's been a long time.
Well, because I remember this $10,000 coming up in prior years, and I can't tell you when that was, as far as being extra.
Then it used to share with emergency management?
Yeah.
AMA and veterans at that time. So it's probably been quite a long time.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not sure how, money's just finishing my 14th month, so I don't have a lot of personal history.
Okay.
But I believe the $10,000 has been coming for several years on the legislature.
Yes.
If I could just interject, my first meeting with Bernie, when we started the paperwork on this case, took two hours. And in that time, five other veterans came in, trying to be seen. And you can only imagine how long it would be and how many man-hours it would take, about 1,750 of them showing up in this door.
Yeah.
These eight hours would definitely help it.
Yeah, I try to make myself available to our veterans. I publish my personal cell phone on the website. My voice greeting says to call my cell phone, and I make myself available to our veterans 16 hours a day, seven days a week.
I don't have a problem with it. If it's within the budget, you're not asking for any changes. If your commission wants you to go to 28 hours, I see no reason why not to.
However, I think what he's considering is that he came in, evidently he had $15,000 left in his budget at the end of the year. That would, $10,000 of that, am I correct, would have to be amended to put back into this fiscal year's budget.
Okay.
Because the $10,000 that we get has always gone towards the salary of the Veterans Affairs Administrator. So that $10,000 from the state is budgeted in there.
The $10,000 is salaries, it's not an authorized expenditure.
It's more like the shell game, okay? You're all spent out of the same fund. Your grant comes into the same fund that you're paid out of. Now, whether I take that $1 bill that they gave me and actually use it to pay you, or whether I push it over here and give it to the veteran that comes in and gets his gasoline paid, it's all the same. What she's trying to say is traditionally, for as long as we've gotten this grant, it's gone into the same pot that pays the salaries and all the benefits that are authorized.
Correct.
That more is always spent than what it comes in from the state.
Right.
So they're both accurate. I just wanted to say, when, when she says it's spent on salaries, ideally, we can say that, but in theory, on paper, no, it's not spent on that. It's spent on services to the vets. So the money that's always come in has always been spent and has been spent properly. But taking that into consideration, the bottom line is, it is asking for more money, but it's not asking for more money to be taxed on behalf of this. It's saying, we always budgeted more, we have plenty left over, can we just flip it from here and put it in the next year's budget and increase our hours? And if that's the answer, yeah, I, it's, again, it's the shell game. It's, it's all the same pot of gold. We just need to take it from this year and put it in this year.
Uh huh. And I think what would kind of help clarify this is each year when you do your budget, maybe you attach something that describes what you're using that $10,000 for that you're going to be getting from the government.
He does that.
He does?
I sent a report, I gave you a copy of it, to the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs. It spelled out where that $10,000 went. So I've spent all that Hoover dime accounted for it. That was for FY '18. The FY '19 report, assuming you approve this, would be very different. And it'll say $89.90 for increased office hours, and then the other 11, 10 for advertising for veteran services.
But that, that report, you're talking about that's done after the fact? That's like the end of the year report on how you spent it? Okay, what I'm saying is that budget time, when you're budgeting, like when we budget this, start in December, you supply something to us saying what that $10,000 is going to be used for.
Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, so that, that way, we kind of...
I can, I can...
You can earmark that and, which also would make it...
Jessica and I are on the same sheet of music.
Yeah, so, okay.
So I'll, when I do the budget, I'll just make a diagram, a paragraph about that.
Right.
So by, by taking, what you're asking for is a carryover from last year to be put into this year to accommodate this, correct?
The $10,000.
What happens next year if you don't have a carryover?
I'll just make sure I have a carryover.
Then...
And if I don't, then it won't happen.
Okay, and that, and that was my question. When you say you're not asking for more tax dollars, would it be asked for in the next year's budget? Because you're using this year, now you build up your reserves, and then next year, it may not be there.
Right. And if it happened, if, if I don't have...
I'm not saying the service isn't worth it.
If I don't have...
I just wanted to be clear.
8900, the next budget cycle in March, then well, at the time, it's passing by.
Okay.
Still making a good return on your investment.
So, um, yeah, I, well, do you have, I mean, I'm not opposed to it either at this point. Donna?
I'd like to point out that if there are 1,750 veterans in the county, and he worked 1,200 minutes per week, that's like 45 seconds per veteran, per week.
But not all veterans need assistance every year.
While not all veterans do need his assistance, you can figure half. So now you're talking about 875. That gives them a whole minute and a half a week. An extra eight hours can help a lot, so.
Bottom line is, is I give the veterans the time they need. An average claim takes about two and a half to four hours. So I put the time into it. I build what's called a complete claim with all the documentation that the federal bureaucracy is looking for, and I've, I've built quite a reputation of being very successful in getting the federal bureaucracy to fund our veterans.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad you're doing the job. I mean, I, and I am not opposed to this, and we do have the funds that we can, that are available, so.
On top of that, you're also doing the transportation, working on a transportation program.
I'm trying to get a van. The VA hospital out of Des Moines has vans available for lease for $3,000 a year. Julie Towne from Greenbelt Home Care is very anxious to manage that program. So I would get the van from the VA, and then with your, my commissioner's approval and your approval, we would then, I would sign for it, and then we would give it to Julie Towne to manage and manage the drivers. So if I have a veteran that needs a ride to the Seabuck in Marshalltown or Fort Doc, or East City or Des Moines Hospital, we have a county leased van available. $3,000 a year for a van.
That's pretty reasonable.
Also includes the gas and the maintenance.
Oh, really? That'll be a tremendous help, too. Yeah.
I've got a, I'm trying to get a free one out of Dale Howard, and he's put me off till January. I think there's a good chance that he'll give me a free, a free van. Dick Withum Ford in Woodlue gave Black Hill County a free van, and they have it all decorated up with red light blue.
He didn't put you off. He had to wait till the next year came.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait till, I've already given out my allocation.
Right.
Come see me again in January.
Yep. Keep that on your calendar.
It's on my calendar.
Yep.
All right.
Bernie, can you make sure and send me what your hours are going to be?
We're going to add the same thing on Thursday as I do on Wednesday. Four hours in Iowa Falls, four hours in Eldora.
Do we have a motion?
You want the motion to move it to 28 hours a week?
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Veterans Affairs office hours to 28 hours a week.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
To fund that, we would have to, in the budget amendment, have that put in as well from last year's funding and go from there back in December.
I'll work with Jessica for whatever I need to do with the budget window.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Okay. Approve the minutes of July 2nd and July 3rd, 2018.
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of claims for payment for July 11th.
I will move to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Change the regular, regular meeting dates.
We talked about this last, last week at the meeting. One of the things we held up on was we didn't know what the time schedules were for some of the meetings we had already scheduled for Greenwich. The ones we have are for the 25th at 8:30 to 9:00, so that won't affect this. And the other one would be on August 1st at 8:30 to 9:30, and I don't believe that would affect this as well. I think we could go ahead and change the dates. The question, were there some ISAC meetings on the 22nd and the 5th? Personally, I would just as soon have the meetings if only one person went to an ISAC.
I think it just needs to be handled like it's been in the past, would be my opinion. If two of us decide to go, it's put on the agenda and the meeting is canceled. And I think we need to address those things as they come up and not try to hit everything in a fiscal year, so.
Right.
Is my, but yes, there are possible meetings, and I know I plan to attend the one on August, I believe, 22nd. I don't know if BJ is or anyone else, so.
The 25th, I had a question on for July, that Friday. That wasn't on his schedule. I would just soon start July 18th, 18th, 25th.
Yeah.
And the 25th was because of the 8:30 to 9 o'clock.
Okay.
It's, it's a bid letting. I think we can get through it no problem.
So more or less, it will be just going back to regular weekly meetings at 10:00 AM unless otherwise adjusted ahead of time.
Yeah, the December 26th would be adjusted.
Right.
Would we have it on the 26th? We'll have the 24th and the 25th.
We'll probably have the 24th, 25th, so we may still have it on the 26th.
I would go ahead and go back to your regular meeting dates at 10:00 AM, starting next week.
Okay, I'll second that.
Wednesdays.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
I better make the motion, say I move to go back to regular meeting dates at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Wednesdays, in the large conference room.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, Julie, I'm sorry.
... say, there won't be any more, they do what they want to be. So we're just going to go back to the regular thing, and that's very good. And we appreciate you doing that.
It's a lot less confusing. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Change of status, Board of Supervisors. This, we had on last week's agenda. We discussed this, appointing Mindy McClellan, the safety coordinator. I know it was talked about having Jessica set the dollar amount. I spoke with Jessica just before the meeting, and she doesn't believe that that's, that pertains to her office beings. Those duties are not under the auspices of the county auditor's office, so.
I guess some of the questions I have is, if, if you give duties to one person, you're taken away from duties as well from your office.
Or filling a gap.
Or filling the gap. And the employee is yours.
She is, but this is traditionally something that's floated around in many different offices. And I think it's unfair to look at the auditor and say, set the wages for something that our insurance pool requires us to have. I think that that is your direction and your, that's your responsibility. It always has been in the past, when it's been contracted with employees or when it's not. It moved around in different offices, and it was never put to the department head to set that salary. They never looked at the engineer and said, well, the office manager out there took it over, so now the engineer can set the wages. That, it's unfair to put that on me. And if you want me to, fine, I'll set it. I'll say whatever Roxanne did it for, then Mindy can do the same. But I, I don't think that's fair to put on me, because what if, what if Cheryl in Lori's office wanted to do it and had the ability and the time and the talent to do it? I couldn't handle it in my office anymore because we had an uptick in responsibilities and things that we had to get done. So for whatever reason, it moved, you know, is it really up to us to decide what we're going to pay that person when they're working under your supervision and guidance as a requirement of our insurance pool? I, I just think it's ridiculous to ask me to do that.
And I, I know historically, it's always been set by the board and, you know, when other people have done it. So I, I guess I'm not opposed to doing that.
Okay. Although, although I'd like the entire line item to go to, that we budgeted go to the office, because I think they'll have extra mileage, you'll have extra costs that could, to be handled through that.
And I don't know how you want to set that up, if you want a separate line item for any of her, any of that job-related type expense or just out of yours.
So leave it as safety coordinator?
That's why I said I don't want it under the auditor, because it's always been in insurance.
Okay.
I don't govern insurance.
Okay.
You govern insurance. So it doesn't need to move, no matter who the person is, whether it's Roxanne, whether it's Mindy, whether it's, you know, maybe it's me tomorrow, you know, who knows who's taking it over, but it's under insurance.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Well, from there, I know Mindy has contacted me, and it's different numbers from you guys. I think at this point, I would just as soon do a $2,000 safety coordinator, make a motion for $2,000 as a added duty as safety coordinator.
Are you approving the change of status for $2,000?
Yes. I'm sorry. To approve the change of status as safety coordinator, starting today. At $2,000.
Okay, I will second it. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried. Application for fireworks permit.
I have Vern Schwartz's family. I will move to approve the application for the fireworks permit, July 21st, with a rain date of July 22nd.
I will second it. Any other discussion?
Location's 21649 East Avenue, Alden, Iowa. Location is 21649 East Avenue, Alden, Iowa.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. State debt for, date for a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. We've got a few things now which Bernie will be, Bernie's budget will be included in this, and also a couple other departments that...
Lori's?
Yeah.
Cars, sheriffs. I don't know who else is in there.
That will be amended. Some of them are where the, there's carryover that wasn't spent in last year's budget for certain projects, and now the projects are being done. So, and speaking with Jessica, she asked that maybe it would be held in September, so we can go from there. Do you know, I mean, that, anytime in September would give you plenty of time to get all this figured out, okay?
Well, I would suggest that 26...
September 26th?
At 10:02.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to set the date, September 26th, at 10:02, in the large conference room.
All right, I'll second it. Any other discussion? 10:02.
Let me look at this one more time, make sure that wasn't an ISAC. No, we're fine.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Application for liquor license.
Move to approve the liquor license application for Pine Lake Country Club, starting 7/17/18, expiration of 7/16/2019.
All right, I will second it. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Set time and date for public hearing for proposed conveyance of real property. Conservation Board.
Got an email that this is just a discussion, so at this time, we don't have anything.
No, it was put on, but it's not ready.
It's not ready yet? Okay, so we just need to table that, or we just...
I'll move to table till it is ready.
Okay.
To be put on.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other business. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.